Okay, I'm gonna call the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen order. Our first item of business is the pledge of allegiance. Sarah, would you please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And issue three conflict for which fans, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
All members in order here and present. Turn now to our approval of meeting minutes from March twenty first.
Move to approve the Board of Selectmen regular meeting minutes from March twenty first, twenty twenty four.
For a second.
Second page correction.
Any corrections?
Yes, the same correction that's been corrected already several times, stolen corrects.
Which one?
On the second page. Under the correction, Deputy First Lieutenant Susan Page four corrected the amount of eight hundred dollars for the license to lake in eight hundred thousand direct money that the town received. Again, they only received eight hundred thousand dollars for the lights in or other stuff involving up at Scott Hall profit. I don't know where you keep getting the eight hundred dollars.
Well, she she hasn't.
This was the correction from the previous. From the previous month and the correction that was made wasn't.
It was eight hundred thousand.
Right, right.
I don't think she edited these since the last one. That was that was I was trying to figure out where the error was and I couldn't find it. So I'm not gonna have her be responsible for that. I just didn't know where the correction was.
This was the correction that was made on the previous.
Yes.
So this correction that was made needs to be corrected again.
Where?
Well, maybe the same hundred dollars. I never spent anything by eight hundred dollars for lighting. You probably spend eight hundred thousand dollars for.
Right, but is this correct, the amount?
But I'm not correcting anything for the eight and the eight hundred thousand in direct money that the town received. I don't wanna correct that one. I want one or eliminate.
Oh, so it really just wants you to add to two.
That'll work.
Alright, others? Sarah?
I don't have anything, no.
Okay. With that correction, could I call for a vote on adopting the minutes as amended?
Aye.
Aye, aye. April fourth. I went through and I corrected, as I said I would. What is this? It would be nine, the, on page six.
You want a motion first or no?
April. I'm confused. This is this is the original one.
I have several, so do you want me to start while you're looking for that?
Oh, hold on. I'm only gonna pay attention to one thing at a time and I don't wanna miss you.
Okay.
For April eighteen, I added the corrections because they did happen. So as is as is the same corrections that you want to.
No, I I corrected the. CDS discussion. And I'm just wondering if where that got held up. Okay. I emailed these on Tuesday. Wonder if they didn't make it in, because these look like the originals to me.
The corrections are in the April eighteenth minutes, but not in the April fourth minutes.
Right.
But some of the corrections that were made on the eighteenth are still incorrect.
No, the corrections were made on the April fourth version.
Oh.
But they're not this, they're not the ones that you have in writing.
Oh, okay.
That's what I'm looking for, the the version that. I mean, it's. Four paragraphs instead of two, two and a half, three pages. So these are still not correct. They're corrected, but these are this is not the correct version.
There's a more general problem. So we voted tonight on the. The March, here's an example, just give me an example, on the March twenty first meeting minutes, and it's got corrections in here. And it says all the corrections, but we had this once before, we raised an issue of a solution. But then the corrections aren't making it into the minutes. The minutes that are posted are not updated. And then the corrections aren't made into the updated minutes, so that if I go to March seventh online, it has the original errors. And so then we had this once before it came up. And so the only way to know that there's errors in the minutes would be to track. The next meeting or subsequent meeting, it could be two or three meetings later, where it says corrections are made to the meeting minutes. But I, we talked about it once before, I know this disagreement, because I asked that the original meeting minutes be corrected.
And I think. Can't do that.
And I think we made.
F O I just finished saying that those minutes have to be posted within seven days as they are.
You're wrong.
And that the next correction would be when you approved them, you would note the corrections in the next set of minutes.
No.
Not go back and fix the minutes.
That's incorrect. And F O I wouldn't have said that.
Yes, they did. We just said that.
F O I said, so you're saying F O I said that you don't correct the actual meeting minutes?
You can't. Those have to be published seven days within your meeting. So the corrections have to be in subsequent meeting minutes.
So I don't I don't think the.
Think about it, makes sense, because like you could, you could be like playing games, like, no, we gotta correct them if we want for six weeks.
That's why they, that's why they put the minutes aren't approved until previous meeting. So. Did the disclaimer on all the minutes that are posted before we approve them.
So I don't think, let me just say, well, I don't think that could be possibly be correct, because we're allowed to post, it has allowed to post draft meeting minutes. But until the voter on it approved, they're not the official meeting minutes. So when they get a voter on it approved, they become the official meeting minutes with corrections. So if we're posting, if we're posting draft minutes. They should say.
They do. They say these are not official until they're approved.
Well, they're not approved this way, and so.
Actually, minutes are not official until approved at a subsequent meeting.
Do you have the contact information for the gentleman who's here? I I don't need it this moment. I don't need it this moment.
Yeah, he gave us numbers. Yeah, let's follow up with that.
I would be happy to circle back with him. Thank you. Alright, so.
Everybody's wrong.
Well. Certainly that's possible, but it's not possible that everybody would write here. Alright, so twenty first, we all agree on that. I need to get the corrected versions that has page numbers on it. Of April fourth. So we need to hold those. And then we can turn to the eighteen. I have, you can have an option to postpone. Postpone the meeting minutes from April fourth.
So move.
There a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
April eighteenth. It's our first time to.
Okay, so this is where I have a question, because some of the corrections to the April fourth minutes that are in these minutes are still not correct as to what the motions were for April fourth. So how do you wanna go about doing that? So if we're correct, I understand we're, you know, we're the process, everything, but I really, I want. The minutes that are correct, making corrections to be accurate, you know, I don't, that's very important.
So. Any anything that's in. The April eighteenth one, observing.
Okay. So. Page two, four B at the bottom, where it says. Selectmen must get page three, motion to reconsider must be changed to renew. That still would make the context of the motion incorrect. The entire motion needs to be changed. It's to renew the Arts and Culture Committee for a term of eighteen months is the correct motion. So just changing those words is not acceptable.
Okay.
Um.
Well, I don't turn up on that one.
Yeah.
I think that's exactly what you said, change, that we know it should be alright, so that there's some understanding of.
No, because the motion says to a commission and that's not correct. Because if you just change the word renew, it says to renew the Arts and Culture Commission in eighteen months. This is for a term of eighteen months as a committee. On page three at the top, where it says committee members to submit the application, not Debbie Williams, the chair. It didn't have anything to do with her being the chair, it's just. They need, in order for them to serve, they need to all reapply. It doesn't. I'm sorry, it's just very confusing for me to keep going back and forth and. Making sure everything is correct weeks later.
So I'm page two of four eighteen, at the bottom.
Yep.
It. Based on what I'm reading here, it should be to renew the charge.
That's fine.
And that that satisfies.
Yes, that would satisfy it.
What's next?
Page three at the top, where it says First Selectman Bowser asked the Arts and Culture Committee members to resubmit the application, not Debbie Williams, the chair of the committee. Still doesn't change the context. Because it was the, it was stated that I said about resubmiting the application for a commission after eighteen months, but it was for them to resubmit their application so they can serve. Maybe I'm reading into it too much. I just want it to be accurate. And then page four, the motion that Keith made, career is, it should be carrier. That's what I have. Union subject to the First Selectman verifying that the insurance career should be carrier approves the changes.
On page four of four eighteen?
Yes. April eighteenth, yeah, page four.
Oh, I see.
Okay.
Alright, anything else? All in favor of the April eighteenth minutes as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Can we just go back to the same?
But it should it should say carrier.
Insurance carrier.
We're talking about Kerman. So I'll say again, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post? Alright, public participation, one or two opportunities for members of the public to address the board. If you'd like to address members of the Board of Selectmen, please state your name and your address. I'll first give us the opportunity, anybody here in the room, and then I'll turn to anybody who may be with us online. Yes, ma'am, name and address, please.
Freddie Roja, one of the, this fourth Avenue, Rockland, Connecticut, zero six zero one six. Please, everybody. In an effort to receive information submitted in the CDS USDA grant application for the community center, I contacted the USDA. Since the First Selectmen's response was that they didn't have, keep a copy of it. I've included documents in your packet that were part of this response. As a reminder, according to the information contained in the grant application, the four point seven two million for the community center was to include. Cost for the following, three point eight two million for development and construction, hundred thirty thousand for architect fees. Two hundred thousand for equipment. For a hundred and twenty thousand for contingencies. Hundred and fifty thousand for water line installation, which was previously allocated. The legal fees were stated as being incorporated into the town's existing contract with such fees. It's important to remember that the total community center budget is not the four point seven two million plus the water line installation grant. The four point seven two million was the total, including the cost for the water line installation. Obviously, architect fees for the project have already been committed because of the revised drawings caused by the high water table problem. Other costs for development and construction in the water line may have also been committed. Because it is such a large project for the town, it would be beneficial to have regular updates on the status of the project, including budgeted versus committed cost information. Again, the total budget for the community center is not the four point seven two million plus a hundred and fifty thousand. Also, I have this, there's a packet. For everybody.
We don't attach handouts?
Well, this is another issue. So in August twenty twenty three, I went to Town Hall to get a color map. That was on page six of the Second Amendment to the lease for Scott Hall dated July twelfth, twenty twenty two. A female town employee checked in the vault for the original document. It wasn't in the vault. She went to the First Selectmen's office for it. She made a color copy of the entire A page document for me. I've included a copy in my documentation. I was disturbed by the fact that it wasn't in the vault. Also, the reason I had to go to Town Hall for a copy was because the color map was scanned in black and white and couldn't easily be determined what area was referred to in blue. Included in the black and white map is contained online, so you can compare the difference between. The clear color and then the black and white. In March twenty twenty four, I looked online at the Scott Hall Third Amendment. On page two, it refers to the Memorandum of Understanding, M O U, dated August fourth, twenty twenty three. This document was not attached online. I wondered how I could have an unsigned copy of one. I found documentation which indicated I got it from Alan Baker. During a town meeting, it is also contained at the end of the agenda documentation for that Board of Selectmen eight, three, twenty three meeting. I went to the town clerk's office and received a copy of the Third Amendment. The town clerk's office did not have a copy of the M O U either. I could not compare to see if the M O U in the Board of Selectmen meeting was the same as that which was executed. I've included a copy of the Third Amendment with the M O U missing. Provided by the town clerk's office and the M O U that was provided in August third, twenty three Board of Selectmen meeting. I have concerns. The procedures regarding the handling of town land records signed by the First Selectmen Office should be reviewed. The town clerk should keep all originals and not provide access to anyone that could lose your swap documents, especially pages that don't have a signature on them like a map. The original M O U for Scott Hall Amendment three should be provided to the town clerk. Then the Third Amendment should be re-scanned in its entirety, including the M O U and uploaded so it can be viewed online. Any map in color should be scanned in color. If that is not possible, then that fact should be known, especially to town employees, so that documents are prepared appropriately. The map of the Second Amendment refers to a blue area, which isn't easily distinguished in black and white. The color map that is part of the Second Amendment should be scanned in color and uploaded to the land records. If possible, if it isn't possible, the map should be detailed in some other way that can be easily seen in black and white. And lastly, I urge the Board of Selectmen to address this issue immediately, so that the town clerk can effectively do her job and keep the land records complete. And one of the things I'd like to point out, that after I type this up, I remember, is that M O U that's missing. Indicates when the town would be responsible for picking up the cost for the scout hall. So I'm not sure if that's included in the budget, if it was included in the budget this year, but that would be important thing for the town to know, and right now it's not available. Thank you, and I hope you address these issues.
Thank you. Is there any other public participation? Ma'am in the back and then you.
Freddie Farmer, two forty seven Health Order Street. I'm actually here for something that's not really yours, but it could possibly be. Over the past weekends, I. I discovered that there's a bill pending before the legislature about the. It's a bill about the safety of election workers and it's got to do with FOIA and. Gun safety issues, stuff like that. And it's pending, and I believe it's passing, I think it passed, but in my looking at it, I really, I discovered that there was public testimony given. And that public testimony was given by. The town of East Windsor. From. The chairman of the East Windsor Police Commission. Opposing the bill. And I was. A little shocked by. Why the town of East Windsor would be opposing a bill that its entire crux is to protect election workers and people who are coming to vote. Now, I've gone through their minutes and I do not see. That the Police Commission ever had a conversation about it. They never voted on it. So I think it was probably. A personal. Opinion, but it clearly went out under. The town of East Windsor. Chairman of. The Police Commission. I will go and speak with them next week about it, but it came to my mind that. Do we have policies? For any of our boards and commissions that say. You have the freedom to speak about whatever you want under your own private life. But if you're going to go out. And give public testimony. Especially in a legislative session. You cannot do it under the town of East Windsor's name if it hasn't been approved by the town of East Windsor. And. I'm not sure, because we have so many little different pockets. But it's something that maybe we should. Consider. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, and I looked the bill up, five, four, four, eight is the bill you're talking about. It has not passed either the House or the Senate yet.
Yeah, okay.
But it is ready to go in the House.
Yeah.
It's eligible to for a vote tomorrow.
So. Yeah, I I was. When you click on the the testimony, the public testimony, and you get names. R stands out like a sore thumb, because it says town of East Windsor. Police Commission Chairman. And I will have that discussion, but I'm thinking an over, a higher discussion is, do we have policies in place? That. I don't wanna prohibit anybody's First Amendment rights, but in my opinion, they should not be out speaking on behalf of our town without that being. Told that they can. Thank you.
That would be challenging, because so. We we can have that conversation.
Well, tell them Jason's saying that the town of East Windsor. Is against it. And that needs to be correct. I don't care about what he's got, but if they're taking what he's put out there as the town of East Windsor, because I certainly. Am not against that bill. So, and sitting on this board, I'm part of the town on this board and as the public, and I didn't ask him to speak on my behalf. He wants to speak himself as an individual, anybody has a right to say whatever they want, whether it's true or not. That's for somebody else to decipher, but if it's being put on Facebook, and I haven't seen it, but if what Marine says is sicked out like a sore thumb for the town of East Windsor, I have a problem with that as a sitting member.
It's not on Facebook, it's not on legislative.
On the legislative, thank you, on the legislative thing. I I have a problem with that.
Since we're seem to be having a discussion on one. I just wanna say, we we need a rule on that. There's a lot of. Folks in this town that, I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, but. Nor even a lot of people in this town that aren't very towards this mission, that often speak for the town, including at the state legislature. On policy issues that haven't been approved by the town.
I am not sure.
Well, it happens all the time. So we, I think the town needs policy. About that.
I can speak to me as more of an education member.
Right.
We have distinct policy, we do not do it. We do not. We have one person who speaks for us.
I don't I don't think it should be happening unless it's a policy issue, unless it's approved by the policy body. That speaks for that policy issue. I personally how I feel. I think we should have a strict rule on that.
Yeah, and that's kind of what, but. Maybe you could take it off, figure out how. Yeah, I was just, and I will vote it out myself regarding. That particular issue. And I can send you all the links to them if you want. I apologize, I think it's real. I ran the meeting. Just let me know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Yes, sir, name and address, please.
Paul Anderson, eighty nine Main Street, Rockwood. I had a discussion with. A foreman at. Butler Construction Company that's doing a water company project. Talked to somebody last week and they said, oh, three weeks we'll be out of here. He said, no, the end of June. What has happened is the DOT told them when they first started construction that the patch had to be four inches deep. And now DOT says, no, you gotta repatch it at nine inches deep.
So.
Like what they're doing at the moment. Okay. That's gonna take a little bit of time. And then. They have. This company has subcontracted with Garrity to mill Main Street. And they. Subcontracted with Galasso to pave it. So it is gonna get milled and paved, and they said the project will, should be done at the end of June. Just so everybody. Up to date on what's going on. This is not a criticism, anything that's going on, other than. There's not a lot of information as to what's actually happening. It just seems like they're living here. So they are here until the end of June in some capacity, and that's what's the plan at the moment. I try to keep on top of it, because I live on it.
Literally. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, name and address.
Reference to that, I saw some of that deeper work they were doing today on that road. I noticed it was a lot deeper than I had been doing in the past. So I think they're gonna go back and redo all what they did already.
Yes. That's what they're doing.
Okay.
One little quick curious question. If I bring my shovel to Scott Hall Monday, can I join in?
There'll be a big pile of dirt and whatever happens happens. How about that?
I'll do my little part.
Wow. Any other public comment? Is there anybody online who would like to address the board? There's a couple of proclamations included in the packet, one proclaiming May as Mental Health Month. Another proclaiming May nineteenth to twenty first, twenty fifth is National Public Works Week. If you're aware. Many of you know Pete Larice. He is traveled, he is moving out of town and is resigning from the boards and commissions that he is on. I certainly wish Pete well in in his next chapter. I'm excited for him, but he's gonna be missed. So you have resignation, resignation from him, from the C I P committee. And and a note that says he resigned from the Building Committee in three twenty seven, but I don't have that. He can give us, we can give us an actual letter.
Move to accept the resignation with regret of Pete Larice from the Capital Improvement Planning Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just like to thank Pete for all his years of service. He definitely will be missed.
Yeah, I'm very happy for him and what's coming next. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Opposed? All right, now. Madam Craig. We're on to the administrative services agreement?
No.
What?
I'm finished with this as well.
That's started, started.
Oh, okay, sorry. All right, so we went to I C M A slash Mission Square five years ago. Um, at at the request of employees leaving FOIA because of high fees. We went to Mission Square, FOIA changed charges with the penalty, we were currently paying point four three nine in fees. Because of the seventy-five thousand dollar penalty that we paid to FOIA, that Mission Square paid on our behalf. And our current service agreement expires, um, I think already, it was May something or just now. And we're currently, the base fee is point one nine, they have offered us a seven-year renewal for point one four five. So significant savings to our employees. Um, if it goes seven years, the pension committee, uh, pension board approved this last night. Um, so we're here asking for a year approval and permission for Jason to sign it. To continue our relationship with I C M A slash Mission Square.
Which has been working out very well for everything.
Yes.
Al, is there anything you want to add?
I think she pretty much covered it, but the big takeaway besides the fact that it's cheaper is. Everybody likes them, nobody liked what was going on before, and they've done a really good job of getting everything straightened out. So it's a good company and good price.
Any other comments, questions?
Hey, what's the um, what approximately do we do the administrative fee here?
I don't know.
Is it over twenty, point one nine percent of?
Right, it's point one nine.
I can tell you for, yeah, the fees were at twenty-five thousand and they're not all theirs, so it's less than.
Less, yeah, I mean, should it, should.
Each individually employee pays it based on their balance and their accounts, this is uh, four fifty-seven money or four oh one A money.
Was it bid out?
It was bid out five years ago.
Was it bid out?
We did not, you you don't change processors for things like pension every time you do a contract.
It's be immense amount where it inclosed.
It took us almost two years to get that last our fee done.
I thought that, I thought that we have a big requirement for prison services over twenty thousand dollars.
But this isn't town, we're not, the town's not paying the any thousand dollars, this is.
We're the administrator of it, we don't pay, the town doesn't pay anything.
Right.
To Mission Square.
Does the, do the employees have an opportunity to weigh in on this?
They're the ones who were the instigators to get it changed five years ago.
So the employees want this now?
Yes.
They see, they know what's coming and they they want this.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to uh, approve, um, authorize the first selectmen to sign the Mission Square Retirement Administrative Services Agreement.
Second.
Second.
Made the seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approved. All right, we have two uh, applications uh, for an exemption from the town's alcohol provision on town property. We've done this for the last couple of years to allow um, some limited consumption uh, in town park. Uh, the first one is for a private party, fortieth birthday party, um, it's an East Windsor resident, the application is in your uh, in your packet.
Make a mo- motion to approve the alcohol beverage exemption application for Kelly Motolo Private Party.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just have a question, Jen, um. How are we going to, the consumption of Brazilian area only has been checked off on this application, unlike the previous one where it's just been approved. The park isn't open, so you can print it out, I'll give you first. How are we gonna know if it's somebody in the tent at the party that may be walking from the car to the pavilion with a bottle of beer in it? Or if it's somebody walking their dog with bottle of beer in it and not attending the party, um. One is not proper to have a beer there because it's policy, we have to bear, so that one, you know, but. What's excluding somebody from stepping outside of the pavilion? And what is considered the area, is it ten feet, twenty feet?
I don't, I don't know that that's defined.
Yeah.
But we can, we can ask the police officer to um, swing through their patrol.
I don't know, I'm just for future, just because it's gonna come back at some point, I'm sure everybody's.
Alternatively, we could have a uh, summer staff member staff the event, that's gonna come at a cost.
Is there anybody that um, along the same lines? Other than having a staff person there, we don't have, because there ain't, no one's on site to monitor that kids aren't getting access to alcohol or. Teenagers aren't getting access to alcohol or we're.
There, there are when the park is open.
Right.
Um, but the park, I don't think opens until the following weekend.
Right.
Um. But I mean, I can ask Melissa to have somebody staff, I don't want her to.
I I don't, I don't want to staff and I don't want to make a big issue out of it, I get, I just for future going down the road, um. If I'm approved, um, the park's not open.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
But these exceptions, we're supposed to vote, I should, I should, I need to, you're done?
Because the liability belongs to the people that are running, running the pavilion, so it's.
But we, we're, we're asked to vote for exceptions, so we should have some confidence that it's gonna be done safely. And they're not providing us with any information other than they're having a party, and so if, you know.
They told us the number of guests, they told us the hours, they told us the what's to be consumed, um. They've told us the occasion.
Who are also last stopped there, right, this has gone through Parks and Rec, Police Department, Fire March, Fire March.
That's, that's true, um. Right. Right, they've gone too um, scrutiny, if they haven't done their job, then then uh, fall in there too. Right, true. Could we in the future maybe get some feedback from, maybe from Melissa as to how these alcohol activities are going in terms of. Whether there's any feedback about, because again, I'm concerned about teenagers and and young kids getting access to alcohol, I'm also concerned about. People leaving intoxicated, whether there's nobody, you know, I mean, they have to be respond, the group has to have a responsible person. I assume it's the coordinator that's listed here, um. To rely on this person to to make sure that um. Whether the town is liable or someone else is liable, if someone gets killed on the road, it's the problem is a ranger, someone got killed, we don't throw. I'm, I'm gonna support it because it's our process, but and it's been vetted. But I, and you know, first time I'm voting on one of these, I'm a little concerned.
I'm also maybe change the form to get a little commentary from each of the.
Right.
Departments that. That signed off.
Right.
So you're, they're not just signing it.
Right, they spoke with her, they they vetted her, they gave custody of information, advised her, right, exactly.
And if you read it, it it clearly states that um, the person agrees that the event of the dating times, the stage above will be properly supervised. So in the event that anything does happen, if somebody does get a hold of something, um, it's gonna fall back on the person that's running it, so there's no liability.
And Melissa, well, I I'm more than happy to have Melissa come and explain the overview, she's also the town's risk manager, so I'm sure she will have answers for these questions. Um, but I I'm not gonna make them all about her, so I'll, I'll ask her if she can join us on the uh, sixteen. So a motion has been made and seconded on the approval of the way we're, further discussion? All in favor?
Not voting.
Opposed? Uh, and the next one is actually her, she is the applicant on the next one, which is for an alcohol exemption in the, in the park for the evenings listed. Which are, which corresponds with dates of the summer concert series.
Move to approve the application for exemption athletic alcoholic beverages, um. For these East Windsor Park uh, Summer Concert Series on the date six twenty-six, twenty-seven. Seven eleven, seven eighteen, seven twenty-five, eight one, eight six. Eight fifteen, eight twenty-two, and eight twenty-nine between the hours of five thirty P M and nine P M.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Jason, does it say an alcohol to be served, no, oh, there won't be alcohol?
We never ever, the ordinance does not allow us to serve it, um, it does allow us to waive the consumption of it on town property, but we can never, the town can never. Serve or sell, so we're allowing the alcoholic beverages to be consumed.
Yeah, B Y F L, we're not serving.
Right, that's, that's exactly right, and that's the only exemption that's in the ordinance.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I would ask that we table nineteen until after executive session. A move? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tax refunds?
Move to approve the tax refunds, uh, totaling nine hundred seventy-four dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Uh, is there a second?
I'll second for discussions.
Go ahead and discuss.
On um, the first individual, there is one, two thousand eighteen, two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one. Two thousand twenty-two, um. Being bringing in first for that exemption allowance. There was a deadline for exemptions, um, they put out for any programs in town. They put out and there's a deadline in order for you to get the ex- exemption, um. So why are we going there five years? And what would include somebody else that may be in the same situation, and I don't know what a situation is, but I'm assuming they didn't realize they, that's. Some type of big exemption, but wonder if I was in the military and I didn't know I could be exempted from paying my car taxes and I want an alcohol debt.
So, um, I wish Amy was still here, but I, my recollection is that uh, the tax collector is cleaning up. Um, basically, it's basically like the tax, local tax version of the sheets, um, where we, we owe. Um, taxpayers who overpaid, um, certain recompense. She has done outreach to them to let them know that we're holding money that, and that they need to request us to release that, I think that's what this is.
Um.
Amy would be able to confirm that, but that's, I know Patty has been working on that, I know that it was a small number, um, and I know that that would jive with what, um. Uh, would be dollar amounts that are here, but I can't speak definitively on that, I could check with Patty if you want to postpone them.
I personally, I don't know what she said to anyone at home, I personally would like to postpone it till next meeting, we get clarification, just for.
Can amend my motion to postpone till the next meeting.
Uh, is the second amended?
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
In my other presentation to her, if you want to speak, there is. This is in pristine name. Was the property in somebody else's name prior to, say in two thousand eighteen, it's two thousand nineteen, it was in somebody else's name, um. You know, and obviously my family, um, Kelly's boy, she gets an exemption, but if Kelly's not in that house and. Denise is the only one in the house, she doesn't get the exemption.
My guess is it's a light use agreement, but I can look that up.
Yeah, I don't know.
It looks, it looks to me like it's a light use. Well, I can answer that. I think that's it, but I will get compliments on that. Uh, this coming Monday, May sixth, the town will host a groundbreaking ceremony for the new community center, um, the project is now underway. They actually started work yesterday, um, and it will be completed within one year. Joining us for that event will be Senator Richard Blumenthal and Director of USDA Rural Development for Southern New England Scott Soars. All are welcome to attend and we hope you can join us for this exciting event. Um, it's been a busy week for public safety in our community, um, all good stuff. Um, and I want to recognize and thank all of our first responders who participated in the fundraiser for the Anderson family this past weekend. Our first, our first responders working together were able to support a young man in need of assistance to stay in his home. Through their hard work, more than five hundred people came out to support this joint event, and it was a really, really proud day to be from East Windsor. It was, it was a wonderful event. Yesterday, um, that community spirit continued with the police union's tip a cop function at Main Fish Market. Proceeds from that, uh, will go to support Connecticut Special Olympics. Um, if you're looking for a representation of a townwide team. Uh, it was on full display amongst our first responders over the last week or week and a half, they have, they have done just a fantastic job. On April twenty-second, I was pleased to join Representative Foster and Representative Paul, as well as Senator Anwar for a press conference in Hartford. To highlight the need for a local role in citing and regulation of grid scale solar projects. Currently, towns and cities have no authority over them, and that is something that, that they are trying to change this legislative session, so I was pleased to join them for that. On May first, the town's actuary presented updated information on the condition of the town's pension. Which now sits at a funding ratio of eighty-five point one percent, which is very healthy for local governments. Um, lastly, I want to congratulate the Arts and Culture Commission on a very successful open mic night held at the Trolley Museum on April twenty-seventh. Uh, they showcased some, some really, really talented uh, people from the community. A local band who was making their second ever performance and did a really good job. Um, two, two girls who sang a cappella, a couple of Disney classics that were, they, they. It was a wonderful night, they, they continue to do really good things. So that's it, spleen for me, um, I will turn it over to Maureen.
Hey, I don't have much tonight, um, I redefend the, uh, other Bush Control Authority meeting that was held on April twenty-fourth. Unfortunately, due to a conflict, one of their members was unable to attend, and because there are short two other individuals on that uh, board. Um, they weren't able to hold the meeting, um, there was some discussion that took place, um. And I'm only gonna go with the discussion that I feel, um, is of uh, noteworthyness, the first one is, um. They cleaned out their facility oxidation material. Um, and put all the stuff that was scooped out of that, um, vat, if you will call it. And they currently have fifteen dumpsters, data the meeting out there for waiting for. The company that's responsible for removing it to an off-site location, um. Can find a plant that's willing to accept because of one they had, can't do it now, um, so that. Is all contained, so there's no issue with anything other than that they're sitting out there for, who knows, how long. Um, on another note, um. Our superintendent, um. Uh, 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 Mr. Alabosa, um, and retired.
Endley is superintendent.
I'm sorry. You're right, he is the superintendent, um, he is retiring on March seventeen, twenty twenty-fourth, um, and, um. And uh, Mr. Endley, um, is retiring, seconded, he's retiring tomorrow, he's third.
That's Alabosa.
Did I get the names mixed up again? I apologize for that, um, so he'll be retiring, um. You know, if everything turns our way, there'd be subsequent meeting, I don't know if that's taking place or not, um, but the plan is to. Um, superintendent's gonna hire one back, um, for a few months on a contract and then, um. The chairman, um, and the board is gonna hire the other one back, um. In a contract, so this way guarantee transition, the original two people are there to hopefully make the transition moving forward, um, that way. There also was a little bit of discussion on, um. Some changes up at Park Hill, if in one, um, they decide to develop the uh, property up there, um. And nothing has transpired, I'll just leave it at that, um, and I'll turn it over to you for your. Nothing has transpired, so I'll just leave it at that, um and I'll turn it over to you for your previews, you'll have for. In case, there seems to be a question on what the authority is going to be for which responsible for the, um. Sewer hookup, um.
So, okay.
Okay, so. But it's gonna be at a point, I think it's gonna be a loss because those gentlemen have done a good job in my thing out there. Not to say everybody's hundred percent happy all the time, um but I would say, um both of them, these are kudos for doing what they're doing, um. And hopefully moving forward, we can, um do what we need to do, and that's basically all about here.
Alright, Sarah?
Hey, the building commission meeting for last week was canceled, um but I did receive an email from Joe Sauerhoffer. Updating us that the contract was signed by the town and B R D builders and witnessed by the USDA on April fourth. There was a pre-construction meeting where the engineer reviewed some items and the permit was pulled. And waiting for the plans to be reviewed, and the groundbreaking ceremony, as Jason mentioned, is set for Monday, May sixth. Um I also attended the Gavin's Home Makeover, Gavin's Home Makeover event on Sunday and the Tip a Cop last night. Um it was really great to see the community coming together for two great causes. Our officers will participate in the annual torch run on Thursday, May thirtieth. Um and the Board of Education Facilities Subcommittee met at six o'clock tonight. Um we discussed the Broadbrook School boiler funding, um and how it came in. Um with a bid higher than what was anticipated, um they discussed their future capital improvement projects and kind of prioritize them. If the boiler is really necessary, if they had um some other items that would take priority. Uh one was the Broadbrook Elementary School gym ceiling, and also the elementary school chimney repairs. Um there, the demographic study, um they anticipate that the study will be complete within the next month. Uh Board of Education members will tour the middle school on May thirteenth. Um discuss the high school track, there was one written quote that was provided. Um for us, for six lanes, it was three hundred and ninety eight thousand, um to upgrade to eight lanes was four hundred and sixty seven thousand. Um but there also would need to be more money, um for tree removal. Um they are seeking two more bids, um and all quotes should be received by May tenth. Um there was a discussion about uh the leadership of principals and um administration from all the schools did meet. And go over the C S G facility study that um we were a part of with the board event at the middle school. And they kind of hashed their concerns and what uh ways they'd like to see the restructuring of the schools go. Um I guess they were adamant about fifth grade staying as a part of the middle school, um. And they want it to be considered the Family Resource Center, because that enrollment, which occupies in the Broadbrook School, was not considered um in that study. And I guess everything in writing will be um passed out at the next meeting. All that I have.
Thank you.
Keith? Uh the budget representative is scheduled for May Tuesday, May fourteen, twenty twenty four. Um Planning and Zoning Commission approved a zone change for a future Park Hill expansion. Um it's going to be, was approved to an A R H. B, which is a, a age restricted housing development uh zone, the neighbors attended the meeting, uh they were concerned that the. Uh project be done in such way to protect their, um their. Neighbor rights and their, their, their homes that they have, um and Planning and Zoning Commission seemed to be very receptive to that. Um so this is years and years away, but that's the first step for them to be able to move forward. Just briefly, I, on the issue of the meeting minutes, I was, took a few minutes and I here to look up Robert's Rules and Orders, which is also our rules. And it looks like on Robert's Rules and Orders, meeting minutes are supposed to be amended. And then we vote on the amended meeting minutes, so when we, um Jason, when you find out from the FOIA. Representative about the FOIA regulations, perhaps also be to look at the Robert's Rules and Order requirements for amending. Meeting minutes, so we'll have all that information when we have our discussion about that. That's it.
So, for clarification, you're saying that what I told you. Previous when this was brought up, based upon Robert's Rules and Order, they're being done correctly, but based upon FOIA, they're not doing correctly, what are you saying?
No, I think the, the Robert's Rules and Order seem to indicate that the meeting minutes need to be amended.
Right.
And then we voted on the amended meeting minutes, and actually you have a set of amended meeting minutes. Which is what, which are approved meeting minutes, not that we make changes in future minutes and just post them there in future meeting minutes. And I think FOIA also requires, and I just, I mean, I'm, I don't wanna get in argument about it, but I think the minute meetings. The meeting minutes that are eventually posted have to be the approved meeting minutes, and uh I think we need to figure that out. So, we just don't have a, we're gonna have to have a discussion.
You don't, I do.
You have what?
I have a clear understanding of what we're doing.
So, why, why don't I do some homework with, with F O I C, I have an idea for a solution that may make all parties happy, believe it or not. And um take it from there. Al?
So Keith, uh it's kind enough to cover the planning and zoning, uh and I think you all heard about it anyway, the zone change there was the most significant, uh. Agriculture and cult, and uh. Conservation had their garden opening that they do every year with the plowing, that kind of coincided with the Gavin thing, so I think that. We people were both, both at stake, but anyway, that was done and they uh. They sell out all their garden spaces every year, and like probably, they've been talking about expanding it. Well, the other meeting we had was, uh Wetlands was canceled, no business, and then we had um the pension meeting last night. And I just wanted to kind of quickly go over that, sort of the first quarter, we have a total return of seven percent, which is pretty good. Um so that's on now, you know, forty million dollars worth of account value. The thing that I always kind of look at that sort of concerns me is, you know, we're, we took in contributions of a hundred and sixteen thousand, but we have withdrawals of five hundred eighty five thousand. So if we were, we had. A bad year or two bad years, we can start eating into our principles, we always wanna make sure we're. Keeping the contributions up, um and not getting behind on that. But other than that, it's pretty healthy, the overall, we, we did also have our valuation, um Becky from Millman was there to talk a lot of hard math. But I, yeah, but I, we're, overall, we're eighty five percent funded and we're talking about different strategies to get to a hundred. And then she's did some, did recommend, uh you know, we obviously have to talk about this a lot, and it's. Couple years down the road, but she recommended going to a hundred and twenty percent funded, and the reason for that is that. It levels out the contribution that the town has to make, it's a, you know, um you know what it's gonna be every year kind of thing. So anyway, uh been a lot of talk about that, and um overall, things are looking really good, and we are. Focusing on getting to a hundred percent, we dropped some funded level by reducing our. Um our cut, our assumption, our interest assumption, uh and, and also adopting the latest. Tables, and that was uh, uh life tables, uh that was, was it last year or the year before, can't remember, anyway, but that dropped us down a little bit, um so we're kind of. Building back up from that, uh as well as some other things, but looking good, um. That's all I have.
What are they using for uh like, figure for age?
Oh geez, I have to look back.
It's not just an age, they, they adopted, they adopted what are called mortality tables, and they're, it's, it's not just a number, there's a whole slew of them, it's, it's like a.
Depends on what you're doing for a job and.
Since, the, the assumption rate that um they're using is six and four.
Which we, we had brought it down from, I think, was seven or something.
Seven and six and a half, and then we stepped it down.
Yeah, kind of, so it wasn't such a big, cause every time we do that, it means we have to get more, but it's. A lot more realistic, and as you can see, we're at seven right now. Well, we were at March thirty first, it's not seven now, it's probably more like five right now, but.
Yeah, April is wrong.
So, anyway, um it's a, you know, we're with Webster, they're, they're doing this, they're also doing. Uh a investment review, so they're, I had reported on this before, they reported last night, everything's looking good. But they go through all the options that the employees have and just track to see the performance, so nobody's. You know, stuck in a rat, basically, and so if it's something as bad four quarters in a row, they, we take a serious look at replacing it with something a little bit better, removing that money. Out of there into something else, so um that's always ongoing on a quarterly basis. And now.
Alright, uh second opportunity for public participation, if there's anybody from the public who would like to address the board, this is your opportunity. I'll first uh provide the opportunity to anybody here in the room and then anyone online, is there anybody who would like to address the board? Or anybody online who would like to address the board? Okay, uh we will have an executive session, it will just include the members of the board of selectmen, um. I'm gonna start with just, well, I need to, you should refuse yourself.
I'm refusing, I have to, I'm better than you, that's the wolf for sure.
Um. Action will follow on the table items, um item. So I last motion to go into executive session?
So Luke?
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, we're out of executive session, it's nine fifteen, um we're gonna take up the last item for tonight, which is Agenda Item Nine B. Discussion and possible vote on a whole harmless agreement between the town and Asplin Tree Company. Is there a motion?
Move to approve the whole harmless agreement between the town of East Windsor and Asplin. Tree Service and authorize the signature of the first selectman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Note for the record, Selectman Yakalov had to lead for the evenings, but indicated that he also was in favor of the whole harmless. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Harry's unanimous. Uh with no further business to come before the board, a motion to adjourn will be in order, is there a motion?
I'll move that we adjourn at nine sixteen P M.
Is there a second? Second, motion is made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned at nine sixteen P M.